Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Passaic Valley Regional High School Board of Education Meeting for Tuesday, September 7, 2021. Roll call.
Here.
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 Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
For the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible,
Reading of the public announcement. Thank you, Mr. Monahan. I don't have any president's report for this September 7th. We'll just move on to correspondence. No? Can I have a motion to pass the minutes from August 24th?
Motion second.
Roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep. Upstate. There was no, um, okay, I'm sorry. And also another motion for the August 24th executive session minutes.
Second. Yes.
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 Yes. All right, report of the superintendent, Mr. Healy.
Sure. Well, as everyone knows, today was our first day, first day back for students. We had staff in last week professional development, then of course the storm hit, so we were kind of a little short with that. But the first day went as smooth as it could have gone today. We had no issues with students complying with masks. I can actually honestly say that we had 100% compliance with masks. There were no issues. We have decided to split up our lunches. That's probably the greatest time of the day when we're exposed to potential COVID virus because the kids will be taken off their masks. They're going to be eating full time in school. So we have split up the lunches. So half the students will eat in cafeteria, half the students will eat in the auditorium. We are creating a satellite campus, so to speak. We're going to put tables out so the students can actually go right to the auditorium. If that's where we're going to be eating, so they don't have to worry about going to the caf and grabbing food and mustering there. We have monitors there, supervisors there, we have air purifiers, we have teachers, you know, opening up the windows, using the air conditioning. Students are wearing masks when they're not eating, moving around the building was seamless tonight. And it was really an all around great first day. I got a lot of emails from staff members that felt very safe. They were excited to be back with the students and were hoping to continue this positive momentum moving forward. I briefly touched on the storm damage, and I know Mr. Monahan will also add to it. Inside the school, we are in good shape, thankfully, including the new gym floor that held up. So the old patch shop with the gym ceiling worked out well for us. So there's no water in the gym, no water really in any other spots in the school except minor flooding in the basement, but you know, it's very minimal, very minimal. It was just cleaned out quickly. Other than that, the track was damaged. We think potentially the bleachers were possibly damaged, fencing was damaged, pretty much all of our fields were damaged. So we have started the insurance process with that and have adjusters coming out.
Come on, do anything about that.
Yeah, so what we, what we used to recently was, or Mr. Healy just wrote about it. Basically, that allows us to get. Soon as possible. Adjusters come out one time. Hopefully this week. Engineer is coming out tomorrow to look at the features. Open the track a couple of years ago is coming out tomorrow. He has other needs to make some repairs and potentially. We also have a lot of. Also going to try to reach out to FEMA, there's an application process.
I didn't make the first question.
An application process. It's going to be. Friday, so. Data to see how that works. It's hot. But we will see. I'm going to voice out last night. Insurance carrier. I've talked to a board about it. What's that? So we're going to be looking into that insurance. But right now, there is that, it looks like everything is insurable other than potentially the bleacher piece, which we don't know. But questions. On the bleachers. Because when we went out after the flooding, we could see there was much more erosions over the last couple of years. When it was checked, there was a filling area where it was about seven inches less than it was two years ago. So our engineer said that he would have to send, he would have to send down an engineer, our company said he would need to send that.
Oh, we can't hear you over here.
All they did was, all they did was send, take some pictures, send it back to the office. The office said until the, everything dries up and we get an engineer here on site, they will not, you know, they didn't want to approve the use of bleachers.
So is our firm going to ask another entity, another structural engineer to come out, or is Alamo going to take care of it in terms of the evaluation?
Who's coming out tomorrow?
But you said they have to call, they have to contact somebody.
No, 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 no. So they had a, someone from Alamo came and took the picture, sent it over to their engineer, engineers.
Their in-house engineers, right? Okay. Their firm reviewed it.
Your structural engineer. We'd like you to wait till everything dries up.
Where's the structural engineer from?
Alamo, yes.
So this is going to be Alamo's call?
Yes.
So what happens in the process? We approve the green sheet when it comes up. What happens to as far as further approvals from the board?
So, so the green sheet for the approval, we'll be approving the paving that we have quotes for here. If everything gets approved, we will see repairs. Hopefully we'll be getting used repairs on the paving by the end of this week. The Copland coating is coming out tomorrow. They already talked to Mr. Data and said that they.
What I'm asking you is, Jan, I'm really concerned about Jan Fenson, concerned about the Alamo issue. When they give you a number, are you coming back to the board for approval before you go ahead?
But what we did last time, what we did was retroactively, retroactively approved it. We didn't have numbers either. We left when we got the funding 2018, we did something similar to this. We talked to the board committees, emails, just mentioned. So I don't, I don't have a number.
I think, what I'd like to request is that, once you get the numbers, maybe if you give everybody a call, let them know with the situation. What's the matter, John?
It's an emergency. It's an emergency.
But I still think we should know.
What, what does the deductible cover? None of this stuff?
Sorry?
The deductible, does it cover any of this stuff?
Well, it doesn't, it's 50,000.
This is what they told me to do. They said, take a lot of pictures, do all the emergency repairs you need to do. They said it's $50,000. Only thing I do not believe it's going to cover is if the bleachers come back and we need to just put millings down, probably
Everything else.
If it was a structural piece.
We're hopeful everything else will be covered, but. I'm, I'm even okay with doing a special meeting if we want with the bleachers, if that's really going to figure, that's it. I don't mind that. Hello, how are you? Hello? I mean, I just took a ride out there. I think the bleachers look, look pretty shabby. They don't look good? No. They don't? No, but just, they're just old. I mean, I would say if it's going to cost, if milling has to be done. And you know, my whole contention was with this up last time, it's the footings are stable. I don't know what the milling in between the footings do.
What is the milling? Just a little piece of?
Concrete. I mean. I don't know what that does. So I mean, for a big number to get that done for their, for them to give us approval for use, that's why I'm saying we, I, you know, we should at least get a phone call and let us know where we're at. We'll meet with them tomorrow. We'll, we'll touch base with the board tomorrow. Not that personally, I don't, I wouldn't want to spend the money if that really needed to be done. But the last time this came up.
What time, what time of the year?
We didn't do anything. And if the number is that high, maybe we should look at getting, you know, is it possible to put the bleachers into the other project? Field, lights, new bleachers.
Want to, to that point, is it just the home side and the visitor side? Is it both sides? Okay, so I guess the next question, I'm sure the public would ask is, if we understand it's on the evaluation review, are we looking at this being completely condemned for the season until we figure out a reason? Or, or, you know, or is it a situation?
We'll know more tomorrow.
I think we'll know a lot more tomorrow. That's why we're trying to, that's why we're approving on the emergencies.
And the.
And the other issue I have is, I'm not saying, I, I think as far as the fencing issue goes, you know, is, is it, is it a diehard emergency? We can't open football? We got a bleacher issue. So if the bleachers is an issue and we got fenced that looks shabby, I'd like to get two quotes. No, because it's an emergency, you just go and do it. We could still operate with the fencing down.
Well, my other thing was unless, with, with the, and I'm going to jump to the track here for a second, you know, in, in a short, very short time here, two, three months, we're looking at ripping up that entire area and having a lot of trucks and things going on. Is it worth resurface this track? Why don't we just wait till the entire project?
Until everything's done.
Yo, I mean, I, and that way we could do whatever we need to do.
I like that idea. Yeah, I think that's what we. That's going to be a big amount.
I don't want to rush into fixing a track only to have trucks and such.
Yeah, that's going to be a big amount.
So the entrance with teams.
They weren't going to help the track. First of all, it's just.
We'll open it back up to the public.
The second track.
And that could be, that could be done. I'm not even as concerned with the track, John, because I think the track specialists are concerned about the fence because they think that, you know, I'm not saying that any company will do that, but you're in an emergency situation. They're going to hype all you, because you know, then what, you want to get it done fast and that's, that's what's going to happen. And as far as the fence goes, I don't know that it's that much of an emergency. I think we have to look into what would be covered under insurance. So if insurance is going to pay for it, we might as well do it. I think that's part of it, so. Hobson's, Hobson's. That alone is going to cost you. Yeah. Yeah. Fortune, eight feet high? No, 12 feet high? In spots?
No. No, it's six feet. It's, trust me, it's 10 over by the shack.
Yes, it's a lot of money, but hopefully insurance will cover it. And I'm, I'm a part of the operations committee that's dealing with the track and the, the field. But for, you know, if, if, if bleachers are going to cost you a half a million bucks. How much more?
Renewables.
Bleachers are going to cost you half a million bucks. You got to look and see what that costs you on a time, you're doing it on time. It may not be, it's like you're buying a house for $20,000 more over 30 years. It isn't going to be that much. We'll know more tomorrow and then we'll.
So I, I think for the.
Just on the consider option.
Yes, will peace will approve.
Yeah, I, I would.
No, the S will piece will. Yes, well, the Copland.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean.
The track repairs only because we can get those repairs done so that we can use the track in a sense of.
Right, the minimum.
Well, that's why the emergency piece.
The bleacher repair.
Will hold off bleachers. And fencing, I'm going to have, I won't put, we, we'll just wait, we'll have to dispose.
Just, just to keep it honest.
Let's also, why don't we clarify that when we actually get to operations?
Yes. I just wanted, I just wanted to make a note, so I.
Gotcha. Any other updates there, Mr. Healy?
Shout out to our staff, our story, our story has been rock stars since we've sold it. What? So the staff's been great. So very excited to be back.
Yeah, I, I could tell you, our district was delayed by one day. And as many parents probably said, what the heck else could go wrong? So, but we're, our, Woodland Park's going back tomorrow, so we're. And yeah, best of luck to everybody here at Passaic Valley and obviously the staff and the teachers administration and everybody else in between. So, you know. What, all right. At this point, motion to open up the floor to the members of the public? Anyone else?
No.
No, the members. Motion to close?
Second.
We're going to get right into our, our committee reports. In the absence of Ms. Lueker, I'd like to move items one through 10, you know, under education. I would just like to open it for discussion. Any questions, comments? If I could just make one comment, obviously to number 10, Mr. Christopher is here in the audience tonight, and I, I thought about saying nothing, but I have to say something only because, you know, I, I, as, when he was a catcher here at PV, I was an umpire behind him. I umpired alongside him at one point. And just watched him grow up to, I'm going to sound like I probably don't deserve to say this, but I watched him grow up to be an amazing educator and a really awesome man and beautiful wife and family is here with him. And I just wanted to congratulate Mr., well, pending the vote, I guess, I would like to congratulate Mr. Christopher. But with that being said, motion to move items one through 10?
Motion second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, on one through nine, I will abstain on number 10.
Mr. DeAngelo?
Yes.
Mr. Gole?
Yeah.
Catapin?
Yes.
Yes. Before we move on, I don't know, Mr. Christopher, like to just say a few words.
For giving me this opportunity, I really appreciate it. I'm really looking forward to being on board. My experience with the STEM and CTE and research, really looking forward to put PV back on the map, do our best to retain as many students in the area as possible. That's the ultimate goal. Just really, really looking forward to, you know, really being back home. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
And I, I'm sorry, I, I was hard enough for me to call him Mr. Christopher, but he's actually Dr. Christopher. So I apologize for that. And his wife, Alyssa, is also an alum of Passaic Valley too. So thank you, guys. And you definitely don't have to stick around any longer. So go have a drink and get it. Well, you can hang out and you, you gotta, you spend enough time in this library. Picture? We didn't do it. I, um, no, you know what? I had a wedding, Terry lost his wedding. And then Monday I had another one. And then, you know what? So I, I got my basement. I showed you a picture. My name.
Take care. Best of luck.
Good luck.
Finance Committee, Mr. Bacartapan? Motion for items one through eight. Roll.
Yes.
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 DeAngelo?
Yes.
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 So operations, Ms. Bragati?
Yes, I'd like to move items one to, one to three on the white sheet. And item on the green sheet, A dash O one.
A dash O one, as discussed earlier?
Correct.
Right, so A dash O one. Change here is we're going to be moving to new chains with the faculty parking lot and asphalt block area and Copland coating for track repairs. We're going to hold on the, I'm going to just take the other two, the fencing and the bleacher piece out. Okay, until we get more information. Okay, so it'll just be those two.
Any other comments or questions? Roll.
Number two. I'm not necessarily saying table those two. I'm just saying is that get final approval down the road. You could keep it as it is. You keep, you keep it just the way it is.
A O one, I guess.
Well, once you get the numbers, come back to the board and say, maybe we should look for another quote on this or that, or this is where we're at, and get another final approval before we go ahead. Yeah, I'm okay with that.
And see, if we cut this out, cut this out.
Probably doesn't mean much. It's probably just semantics. Then I just wouldn't approve it as emergency measure.
Yeah, that's not really a modest piece. I think we.
So let's.
I, I think we should.
A O, A O one emergency repairs is just the first bullet point of the faculty parking lot. And then if you want, I'll, I'll make another motion of A dash O two for, a motion to go out to bid for the fencing.
Approval for quotes.
Approval for quotes.
Bleacher repairs if needed.
If necessary.
Okay.
Yeah.
If needed, because I, again, we don't know. We know we need. So I have a motion for Mr. Goode Ice.
Yeah, hold on. Let's just clarify. Obviously, we have items one through three. A O one is going to be the first bullet point and Copland and the, the only needed track repair.
And I just want to clarify the, the, the engineer. I don't have a problem if it's necessary for the engineer to get the work. But is it necessary? That's, that's the only thing I want to know. And if it is, come back to the board with an approval and enough. That's all.
We have, only because we have the problem. Belabor this. Well, right, but it's not to belabor this, but when they said it wasn't okay, it was just a, it was a verbal, it's not okay. Can we have in writing structurally what's wrong?
Yeah.
And also. Like you can't, we can't use the whole, maybe the other side. We're going to, we're going to. We're going to meet with them. I hope to know, have an answer by mid, mid morning, early afternoon. So, all right.
Can I just go back again? I just want to say to you, ask him about the footings. Say, you know, are they damaged?
Not clear.
If the, if the footings are bad, then, then you got a real problem. I don't know how the millings in between does anything for those footings. They should be down three feet. On stone. Was anybody here? Was it underwater?
Based on, based on how those fences, based on how those fences have been pushed, it had to be. I mean, it was, it was a river.
Hey, it might have damage. I mean. I know at the golf course, the mats that they have at the, at the range there, they were ripped off. They were ripped up in the woods, 100 yards down. If there's structure damage, I believe that is covered by the shells, correct?
What about, I mean, we know what's eligible, it's not eligible with the FEMA.
All they're asking is for building every information.
I mean, we're going to get them almost, we're going to tell them everything that's happened, give this information, give them a push. I guess it all depends how it's written. If it's written that the millings are needed because there's structural damage or erosion.
Milling's not covered. Unless, unless it's, unless there's a way.
Unless it's jeopardizing the, the structural integrity of the.
We have that in writing potentially from the architect.
All right. Number two. What, what grant is that?
So that's the S or, that's the.
I see that.
ARP S or three. What is that?
This is like the.
It's all the cares.
It's like a third version of the cares.
Yeah, so this, this part basically is, we're getting 1.2 million supposedly, but the 800,000 is money coming from the state and the other 400,000 is coming from. So the feds have not given us a breakdown of 400,000, but we can start writing the grant for the 800,000. So we're just approving so that we can start writing the grant process.
And what's that used for?
It can be used for.
A whole array of.
We're going to be administratively as well as on the operational committee and also the board before we finalize this, we need to just approve it.
This is our third allocation. So the first two allocations were what? The first two allocations were how much?
Well, we had the original.
Right. Right. So this is the largest allocation.
The largest one.
The first one.
800,000 is more flexibility right now, but obviously they have to prove it. We have to write it still, have to solve what should be in it.
Oh, also number three, is that with regret, retirement with regret? For some reason, I, I've read other retirement things from us that maybe I never really remembered with regret or, but if it's, you know.
So.
We're still on one?
So I have a motion and a second from. One through three, A O one, which is just with the two parts.
Right.
Then we're doing A O two, which we just added to say defensive approval for quotes for fencing and features of needing.
Yes. Roll.
Ms. Bragati? Yes.
Dr. Cathcart?
Yes.
Mr. DeRosio? Yes, on one through three. Staying on A zero one, number one, and yes, on number two. Mr. Demi Adam? Yes. Mr. DeAngelo?
Yes.
Mr. Gole?
Yes.
Mr. Lueker?
Yes.
Yes. Motion to move, sorry, Policy Committee?
Motion to move.
I'll jump, I know, I'm awful.
Miss Bragati?
Yes.
Dr. Cathcart?
Yes.
Mr. DeRosio? Mr. Demi Adam? Yes. Mr. DeAngelo?
Yes.
Mr. Gole?
Yes.
Mr. Lueker?
Yeah.
Yes. Mr. DeRosio Athletics?
President of the one and number one.
Second. Yes.
Dr. Cathcart?
Yes.
Mr. DeRosio? Mr. Demi Adam?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Gole?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. That concludes our agenda items, and we will move into our committee reports. Education, there is, Ms. Lueker's obviously absent tonight. Is there anything to be updated? Be updated, education related, no. Operations, Ms. Bragati?
Right now, nothing.
Finance, Mr. Bacartapan?
No.
Athletics? Negotiations?
Um, no report. Did we get everything?
We, we're still working on their salary guide. It's a good meet with the salvo. It just seems like a verbage. Now it's just a salary guide.
Everything that we signed at the last meeting, they approved of except for salary guide?
So hopefully we'll be gratifying the next.
Alright.
The first paper is going out the head. We'll probably be retro in the pays. Hopefully this gets approved.
Public relations?
Uh, no report.
Policy, Mr. Gole?
Uh, no report, Mr. President.
DeAngelo, technology?
No report this time, but I would like to try and schedule a tech committee meeting. Maybe not for the next meeting this month, but maybe in October. That'd be great. Thank you. You ready?
There's no report for the board, Mr. President. School boards?
Yes, Mr. President, just to bring to the board's attention. To most members of the school board that are signed up soliciting opinions and feedback based on everything for the past year and a half. And they're putting together their strategic plan through 2025, so just encouraging everyone to give their feedback. That's all, Mr. President. Thank you.
All business.
I just wanted to mention the operational side without.
Okay. All advertising incomes, right?
I just have a question. How?
Want to have a list?
Yeah.
I will get you a list. I'll, I'll get an update and get it to you.
I hope you need, I hope you need government number four. Because that one's.
Of course, it's not.
I'll find out and be sure I get, get in touch with them.
Yeah, I think I might. Because I don't want to.
You know what? It's already September. Why would we sit here in December?
I just have that.
Yeah, alright. Any other new business? Okay, ask for a motion, open the floor again to the public? I'm trying. No one? Okay, seeing no one? Anything from you, Mr. Monahan? No one. Okay, motion to close. No executive session, correct?
No executive.
Motion to adjourn. Have a good night, all.